The commission with the clerk, call the roll please.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Commissioner Devine.
Here.
Commissioner Jelka.
Here.
Commissioner Purney.
Here.
Commissioner Vanir.
Here. Would you all please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is a citizens' forum, a time set aside for any citizen that would like to address the commission on any item that is not on our agenda today. Are there any citizens that would like to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to awards and proclamations, which we have none today. The next item then would be public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, public hearing on petition number 4293 requesting a vacation of a 30-foot of platted access along the west side of Lot 2, Block 1, in the Schilling subdivision number 7. Subitem 5.1A, first reading ordinance number 07-10,382.
Staff report, Mr. Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and commissioners, this is a petition that was filed by the representatives of Citywide Self-Storage. It is a mini-storage business that's located on the east side of Centennial Road, south of Magnolia. And we provided you with a little bit of background that back in 1998, the Airport Authority went through a very comprehensive replating of much of the property out in that airport industrial area. And they also worked with private landowners to clean up items that were left over from the 1966 plat that was prepared by the federal government. The particular area that we're talking about today is known as Schilling subdivision number 7. And at the time, it was platted. It covered 32 acres and contained four lots. At the time, it was looked at, there were no internal private or public streets, but there was a 60-foot private access easement that was owned by the Airport Authority, and it was the means for providing access east of Centennial Road. And that roadway essentially serves Citywide Self-Storage, Blix Fertilizer, Smoky Hill Construction, and at the south end, Builders' Choice Concrete. It is not a private street, but essentially serves as a side street for that area. The city's development review team has had some discussions with the owners out there about constructing additional buildings and making other improvements to their mini-storage complex. And the issue of access to Centennial Road came up as a result of those discussions. This petition was filed. And at the time of the plat, there was restricted access, which meant no individual driveways. And this request is to break that access control to allow a 30-foot driveway to be constructed on to Centennial Road. The rationale for getting restricted access on the plat is to try to minimize the number of curb cuts on our major arterial streets and thus reduce the turning points and number of places of conflict with vehicles. Where possible, we've gotten restricted access on arterial streets where side street access is available. And you'll see that pattern on most of the newer arterial street sections in the community. The, back in 98, as we noted, the access was restricted because there are three gated openings that provide access into the mini-storage complex from the private drive to the south. In response to this petition, the engineering department had expressed concern about the proximity to this driveway to the existing access easement. But this lot has very narrow frontage on Centennial Road, and there's, because of the ditch, there's really no other place to put it and get it any farther away. There should be no impact on the city of Salina financially if this is approved. The developer's contractor would be responsible for constructing a driveway as well as a culvert over a drainage swell to city standards. It's our recommendation that the ordinance allowing the vacation of platted restricted access, if approved, contain the following condition, and that the final design plans for that driveway approach and culvert and the culvert sizing be approved by the city engineer prior to construction of the driveway. With that, I'd be welcome to take any questions, or we can refer questions to the city engineer as well.
Questions of staff.
My question is about this comment here in the middle. The engineering department has expressed concern about the proximity of the proposed driveway to the existing access easement, given the speed limit on Centennial Road. Does that imply a recommendation one way or the other, or?
Well, those comments came from the engineering department staff and were forwarded to me and reflected in the report. I would allow them to expand on that if wish, but certainly, given the amount of frontage there, ideally, you wouldn't have two openings that close together. But the counterpoint to that is that currently, the property has no driveways of their own on Centennial Road. I guess what they're saying is ideally, you would not have a second curb cut opening as close to that private drive opening as what is proposed here.
Yeah.
As you can see from the-
That is the big question.
Something will use that.
Commissioners, if it would help clarify this, Carlton Place or city engineers here, maybe he could help clarify that question a little bit.
Yeah, Mayor and commissioners, excuse me. That, what Dean just said is my concern there also, that the proximity of that entrance to the existing one that is already there. They do seem to have three access points off of the easement road there, and I'm just concerned with some traffic safety issues along Centennial with the speed limit that's there and the proximity of both entrances. With what he said, I also believe that it's logical that since they do not have their own access point off of Centennial, that's kind of the only real reason why I believe it's feasible. As far as traffic-wise, it's really not the ideal situation.
Who owns the access drive that they currently are using to serve their storage facility? Who owns the access drive that they currently-
It's the-
The airport.
I believe it, yeah. It's the airport.
Do we have any idea what kind of traffic generation this present access road generates?
No, not that I know of.
Does, do we know that if most of the traffic to the other facilities behind the subject site primarily used the entrance off Magnolia Road, or is this access, is there a possibility that we could close this access road and just provide one access to the storage facility? Is what I'm asking.
I am unsure of that. I don't know if Mr. Andrews has any other.
If you can look at the aerial photo, the primary entrance into the Smoky Hill Construction Yard is from Magnolia Road. They do use this driveway as well as the driveway to the south where Builders' Choice is. The road is there primarily to serve the Blix fertilizer operation, which could be served from either of those two driveways. But the existing paved access drive is asphalt and is fairly substantial and is in pretty good shape. That serves the gates to the mini-storage facility today.
But the point that you made, Dean, in your presentation was that this is a platted lot without access to a public road.
The entire frontage is restricted, yes, with the idea that the access is from the private drive, which serves, in this case, like a side street.
But that is actually, that Blix fertilizer bulk storage area is access to that public right away.
Correct.
And so, you know, from a technical standpoint, this, if this were being platted today, this lot, or being developed today, this lot would have to gain access from Centennial from this point. There's no other point that it can gain access. And it is a platted lot.
Well, in 1998, when the plat was looked at, the access to this lot was determined to be from that private drive, the side street. And that's why the access was restricted on Centennial, because it had access from the side street on the south.
But that is only, is that by, through any written agreement? Or is it just, just because?
It is not, it is not through any written agreement that the Airport Authority has allowed all the users within that Schilling subdivision number 7 to use that, but it is not by any kind of formal agreement or covenant.
Right. It's another one of those private roads that we have that serves more than one property that by doing this, we could somewhat eliminate that whole issue as well.
That could be part of what their rationale was for requesting this driveway. It would be theirs and under their control.
Okay. Any other questions, the staff, before we open the public hearing?
Do we know what kind of traffic generation the storage facility-
I do not.
-experiences?
Why don't we open the public hearing, let public comment, and then ask some additional questions. So I will open the public hearing on this petition, 4293. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? Please give us your name and address.
I don't know that I would be known as public here. I'm the spokesman for Citywide Storage. At the time that we purchased Citywi-, I'm Larry Triplet, by the way.
Thank you.
At the time we purchased that location, access was by that same street, and we were allowed by the Airport Authority to gate that road, which we did. And that was our access, and there was no other access there. There was a request by one of the people, and I don't remember which one it was, from behind, to also use that access, so our gate was moved to the rear of the property. But there is a gate back on, at the construction company, which stays closed almost all the time. It's only at certain times when they want to use that access road that they even open the gate, so that you were asking about-
Could you point that out on this map, please, Larry?
I guess I'll just stay up here if it's okay. This is the access road right here. This is the access road.
Right.
It's to the south of the complex. We originally had it gated across there, had a fence down through there. In fact, these trees that are on this property are trees that we planted because we just kind of took it as our own situation and kept that road and did all the maintenance and everything till there was a request by the construction company, I believe. But there's a gate that sits right here, and it's closed about 90% of the time. A gate right back here at the end, so there's no traffic other than ours. You, is that enough for everybody? As far as traffic and traffic into mini-storage, that's also minimal. We probably have a dozen customers throughout the day that access that storage on a daily basis because they run businesses out of them. But I doubt that you would exceed 25 cars, 25 vehicles, in and out of there in any one day. And I doubt that the average vehicle count on the road that we used to use or do now for access, I doubt that you would find an average of two vehicles. So you're somewhere in the 25, 30 vehicles at the outside in the total, in the total traffic for the complex and the road. By allowing this access, and we're built backwards today because our access is to the rear of the storage, and we have outside storage that's right out next to Centennial. It is our intent to put a new frontage on that, to remove the outside storage. This is going to take some time because this all has to be worked out, but that's the intent, is to remove the outside storage, put a good-looking entrance on the front so that it's more appealing to the public. And I think from asset appeal, it's going to be considerably better if you grant this situation. As far as turning off of Centennial into, into the complex, there'll be, I would say, almost zero competition between the two driveways because there's none on the other one, if we remove ours. And I stand open for questions if you have.
So you, so you don't really need four entrances, which is proposed right now. You'd keep the three on the side road plus the new access from Centennial.
We do have, on occasion, semis that want to get in there. And with the semis, we will probably still exit on the road with those semis, but it will not be a typical driveway pattern.
What I'm trying to get at, Larry, is I'm concerned about the close, the proximity of the proposed entrance with the existing roadway. And if we close the existing roadway, you, you know, and vacate that, I wondered if that would impact any of the other traffic for the properties behind your facility as well as yours. That's what I'm trying to-
If you vacated the road, I am sure that the construction company, because of the equipment that they bring in and out of there, they're the ones that opened the gate. So I think if there is somebody that uses that road, that would be it. I think once in a while, the concrete trucks come down through there. But they'd have to get the construction company to open the gate because the gate's closed.
How does the construction company block it off from the Magnolia Drive that appears to come through here from the north? Is that-
Right at the rear of our property. Even with the rear of our property, there's a gate that's in place that is closed about 98% of the time. There is no traffic goes through there. On an average day, there is no traffic goes through there. On occasions, that gate gets opened up and there is some traffic, but it is of no consequence whatsoever.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, just a thought on this. The gate that he's talking about, that the concrete company closes, is on the private easement of the Airport Authority. I'm going to ask Mr. Andrew a question, and if we don't know the answer to this, we might recommend that you defer the, or postpone this a week to check that. But Dean, do you, do you know the, have you looked at the actual easement, private easement documents from the Airport Authority to? It looks obvious that the intent is to provide access to the adjacent businesses, but there's a real question as far as permanent access to properties on here that I think is the question the commissioners are asking. Do we know if that's the intent of that, or if it's written in the easement?
The intent is that, but as the mayor observed in many of these roadways out there, it is an informal arrangement or an understanding. We don't have in front of us any document that is a formal arrangement that actually grants those rights to those owners. I think that would be the question, whether, is there a formal arrangement amongst those owners, or is it informal with the Airport Authority?
Have we reviewed the actual easement document to see if it provides any language relating to the intended use of that private access easement?
We don't know that there is a separate easement document because the easement was provided on the plat.
Okay, I see.
And so, the, whether there's a separate written arrangement between all those owners, that would have to be researched.
Okay.
I'm aware of no document whatsoever allowing us easement to that. Now, Dean, you said it's on the plat?
It's on the plat as an access easement.
We have no documentation.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. It's my opinion that this, if we're trying to move forward and to treat these properties the way they should be treated, that this property should have access off of Centennial. The platted access that comes in on Lot Number 4 that is shown, obviously is there on the plat.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't have any problem seeing, I think Lot 2 needs to have its own access.
I agree with the mayor's comments, and it looks like there's a lot of potential for future replating of especially the big Lot 4 and probably the big Lot 3 at some point in time, at which time it would be good if, if this particular lot already had its own access. So I would move that ordinance number 07-10,382 be approved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 07-10382. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Mayor Mars, I would like to also direct the staff to begin an inquiry because it may be that these uses will not be here forever, and I think that the, the way to address the traffic concerns and the plating issues and all of that needs to be a proactive approach, not an after-the-fact approach.
But I think, to go along with your comment, I think Lot Number 4, if it is replatted, its access at the end point could be moved far enough south to where there wouldn't be a conflict between the two.
Exactly. But I think that that would, that should be done beforehand, not after the fact.
Okay. Next item is consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of March 19, 2007. Item 6.2, resolution number 07-6376, appointing Sharon Luca to the Accessibility Advisory Board, Brian Schmidt to the Library Board, and Les Appleby to the Planning Commission. Item 6.3, resolution number 07-6377, authorize an agreement with Sunflower Insurance Group Incorporated to provide insurance broker services. Item 6.4, resolution number 07-6378, authorizing a farm lease agreement with Gary and David Olson.
Are there any items that any commission would like to have pulled from the consent Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Mayor Mars, I would move for approval of the consent agenda. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item is development business, which we have none. Next item then is item 8, which is administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 07-10,378, vacating the North Third Street right away from Iron Avenue to the Smoky Hill River.
This ordinance was passed on first reading on March 19, 2007, and since that time, no comments have been received.
Mayor Mars, I move approval on second reading of ordinance number 07-10,378.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve on second reading, ordinance 07-10378. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Devine.
Aye.
Commissioner Jelka.
Aye.
Commissioner Purney.
Aye.
Commissioner Vanir.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Next item.
Item 8.2, second reading ordinance number 07-10,381, authorizing the issuance of Industrial Revenue Bonds Series 2007 CAS Industrial Controls.
This ordinance was passed on first reading on March 19, 2007, and since that time, no comments have been received.
Mayor Mars, I'd move for approval of ordinance 07-10381 on second reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 07-10381 on second reading. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Devine.
Aye.
Commissioner Jelka.
Aye.
Commissioner Purney.
Aye.
Commissioner Vanir.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Next item.
Item 8.3, second reading ordinance number 07-10,380, admitting section 4259 of the Salina Code by adding temporary quarters for emergency service providers and responders as a permitted term, temporary use.
This ordinance was passed on first reading on March 19, 2007, and since that time, no comments have been received.
Mayor Mars, I move adoption of ordinance 07-10,380 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 07-10380 on second reading. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Devine.
Aye.
Commissioner Jelka.
Aye.
Commissioner Purney.
Aye.
Commissioner Vanir.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Next item.
Item 8.4, extension of the 2006-2007 landfill professional engineering services contract with Camp Dresser &amp; McKee Incorporated.
Staff report, Mr. Fraser.
Mayor and commissioners, in order to comply with numerous CPA and KDHE regulations pertaining to the operation of a landfill, we require certain engineering services to be conducted each year. In the past, the city has contracted out many of these landfill engineering services to our consulting engineering firm with solid waste experience. Although all tasks are normally completed by the end of the contract period, occasionally, due to unforeseen circumstances, a contract will need to be extended to complete all the tasks. Two task amendments under the 06-07 Annual Engineering Services Contract with CDM fall into this category and have yet to be completed. By extending the current contract to September 30, 2007, adequate time would be available to complete these tasks. The first is Task 7, solid waste composting consulting. Work is about finished on the feasibility section of the report. A planned study session in April provides several options for the city to consider. After direction from the city commission, the rest of the report will be completed. At this time, no money has been expended of the $36,500 task. An extension of Task 8, supplemental groundwater investigation, is also required. Due to weather delays and subcontractor availability, this task has not yet been completed. Once the data gathering has been compiled, a report on the findings will be presented to the city commission. At this time, no dollars have been expended on this task. No additional funds will be required to complete these two tasks beyond the amounts approved in this year's contract. Sufficient funds are available in the 2007 solid waste budget to pay for these expenses. Staff recommends the city commission approve the attached agreement authorizing the extension of 06-07 Annual Landfill Services Contract with CDM in order to complete Task 7 and Task 8. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of staff. Is there any concern with regard to KDHE and EPA compliance with regard to not having these tasks completed in the calendar year that they were supposed to be completed?
No, we're, we're in compliance with them, and that should stay in accordance with that.
Other questions of staff? Are there any public comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Mars, I move we approve the extension of the 2006-07 landfill professional engineering services contract with Camp Dresser &amp; McKee, Inc., and that it will go now until September 30 of 2007.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve this extension of the Camp Dresser &amp; McKee contract for the 2006-2007 annual landfill professional engineering service contract. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item.
Item 8.5, resolution number 07-6379, authorizing 2007-2008 landfill professional engineering services contract with Camp Dresser &amp; McKee Incorporated.
Staff report, Mr. Fraser.
Mayor and commissioners, this is the new 2007-08 contract with CDM for engineering services. Services that we have required in the past to be a part of the professional engineering services contract have included the preparation of the semi-annual groundwater monitoring reports, the preparation of the annual closure cost calculations, preparation of the annual air quality compliance reports, and miscellaneous services. In the 07-08 contract, there will be four new areas of responsibility added to the contract to address KDHE requirements. These would include preparation and submitting of the air emission source class 1 operation permit. This is required every five years. Preparation and submittal of the Bureau of Water, a storm water pollution prevention plan, this is required every five years. Providing operational plan update as required by KDHE. We're not real sure if that's necessary this next year, but our consultant feels that they want to put some funds in the, in the contract to be able to cover that in the event of any requests from KDHE. And monitor well installation, which will provide funds to act upon decisions made as a result of the current GeoPro groundwater investigation that is currently underway at the landfill. The groundwater investigation began last summer and is continuing at the request of KDHE in order to obtain additional information. This investig- This investigation should be completed and reviewed by KDHE in the next few months. This task only covers the analysis and reporting expenses. Drilling expenses will be charged directly to the city. We expect that there will be somewhere in the neighborhood of possibly three, maybe four clusters of wells. Each one of those clusters goes for probably about $3,000 to $4,000. So there could be some additional cost that's going to be incurred, or there will be additional cost incurred, to be able to pay for the actual drilling. We didn't include it as a part of this contract because we didn't want to incur the overhead from CDM. So the direct billing to us will save the city some money to be able to do that. But just a point of clarification on that. This agreement has been submitted by our landfill consultant, CDM, and addresses above required services. The contract time period is from March 31, '07 through March 31, '08. Payment to CDM will be based upon the actual cost incurred by CDM to provide the engineering services specified in each of the eight separate tasks. As identified in Exhibit A, in the attached agreement or in the agreement as requested by the city, the total compensation, however, shall not exceed $65,500. We have reviewed the agreement, and the fees seem appropriate for the compensation required. Sufficient funds are available within the '07 solid waste budget to pay for these expenses. Staff recommends the City Commission approve the attached agreement authorizing CDM to perform certain annual landfill engineering services in the amount not to exceed $65,500. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of staff.
I have one on this. In the previous action where we extended the solid waste composting consulting, that's strictly a feasibility study. There's no continuation of that study in this next contract. So what happens if we find composting to be feasible with one of the options that CDM gives us? Will we automatically give them another contract? Does it come up as a whole new situation on final design and following through on that compost center?
Well, you're correct. Is it the current contract, the extension that we have with CDM, provides a report on composting options? The first section of that is the feasibility study. But that only covers the feasibility study and the different options that the city could take. Any costs that we would incur to develop a site would be up and beyond what we've already approved at this time.
Okay, and that'll be a completely separate contract from the one that's up for current consideration?
That's correct.
Other questions of staff?
Somebody else asked this question a couple years back, but I want to ask it again. Who else does this kind of work?
There are other companies within the state of Kansas that does do these solid waste services.
Really? I mean, we've been with this particular company for as long as I can remember. Have we ever even, obviously, to my knowledge, everybody's happy with their work, but are there other companies that do this for a la? It seems like the way EPA and KDHE keep asking for more and more reports, companies like this are kind of on a gravy train. Is that accurate, or how often do we look at who we're doing this work with?
Well, I could say is that since I've been here the last nine years, is that we have worked with the same consulting agency. We've not really gone out and tried to solicit proposals from other companies for these services. I think as far as our landfill services are concerned, we're very satisfied with the work that CDM has done for us in those areas. We have had some conversations with CDM concerning the composting report, but as far as the landfill aspect of their services, I think all of those services have been done quite well, to our satisfaction.
Commissioners, just a thought, I think that the level of work we've had from CDM with the landfill has been why we've stayed with them for so long. These are pretty timely, but the thought being is, is if you would, it doesn't always hurt if there are other providers that can provide the quality services that you're looking for, to go out and ask the question every once in a while and do maybe a qualification-based selection process to take a look at them again. Doesn't mean that CDM would or wouldn't get this work in the future, but at least we could, you know, have a fresh look at every one. If you'd like to be on these for us to take a look at, possibly doing that, let us know. We'd be happy to take a look at that if you think it might be worthwhile to just simply see who else is out there that are qualified to do this type of technical work and can provide it here in Salina.
And I see those as, because they're ongoing work, I see that process where you would do an indefinite delivery contract for a period of years instead of maybe just one, and you have a...
And then you go through a process after that?
You go through a process after that. To me, that puts this type of service on a better ground, and I agree with Commissioner Joka, we don't really know what's out there. Nothing against the work that they've done, but that seems to be a typical process when you have a service that's done over and over again. We have invested a significant amount of money in their knowledge base of our landfill, and there's some value there. And we don't necessarily want to pay for someone, pay to teach someone else the knowledge that they have gained that we have paid for. But we do, I think, in being good stewards of the tax dollars we deal with, I think that would be an appropriate approach to do at some point in time.
Well, and as you know, you know, the first thing we do look at would be the qualifications, so we make sure that the work level is adequate. But after that, then, when you do have a process like that, it does tend to make sure the pencils are fairly sharp. That's an objective we want to have as well, even though with professional services, it's usually the second priority, not the first, but it is one of the priorities. So we'd be happy to take a look at that. Again, it makes sense with the timing of these, if we can move forward with these, but certainly we could go through that process and be ready for the future and try to package up, whether it be three years or five years, or how long we think it makes sense to invest in, whether it be still CDM or another company, after going through that process.
It's important that we should point out that what we have is a qualification-based selection process.
Correct.
It's not a fee-based selection process. It's based on qualifications, first and foremost. So even though you go out and ask for qualifications, you're not comparing dollars at that point in time, you're comparing qualifications.
Right. And the reason for that, as you know, is that certainly some of this is fairly complicated, and when it has environmental significance, we want to make sure it's right. That's the most important thing. And some of this type of work also leads to other work, so not all of it is fully packaged up. Some of it is, it occurs every so many years, we know we need to do that. But certainly, if you, depending on what you find with some of this, it takes you into other work, too. So some of that's a little bit open-ended, and you know it when you get to it. But a good majority of it is routine as far as being scheduled out in the future.
If we were comparing any things at all in here, it would be this Exhibit C, which would be their hourly rates that they're charging, because this is all done on an hourly basis. How do these compare with last year's hourly rates?
There is some slight difference in that, is that in the '06-'07, they had professional number two for $100 per hour, and then when we look at the other rate, is that there's now a professional three. So they've added a category in there, and it looks like an additional person's come on board. But they have gone up in senior support services by about $5 an hour. Staff support services have increased by about $5 an hour, so slight increase.
So we're basically just keeping up with inflation if you want to deal with it on an hourly basis?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any public comments? Bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Mars, I move approval of resolution 05-6379, authorizing the attached agreement with Camp Dresser &amp; McKee to perform certain annual landfill engineering services in an amount not to exceed $65,500.
It's 07-6379.
Oh, I'm sorry. 07-6379.
Then I second that.
Thank you.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution 07-6379. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item.
Item 8.6, award of contract for the 2007 asphalt major maintenance inlay project number 07-1621.
Staff report, Mr. Place.
Thank you again, Mayor and Commissioners. The Mill and Inlay Project is a major component of the 2007 street repair program. The attached map to your packet shows four sections of arterial or collector streets. These are Santa Fe Avenue from Mulberry to Elm, Iron Avenue from Ninth to Fourth, Crawford from Centennial to Ninth, and Broadway from the Viaduct to Crawford Street. The bituminous milling inlay is a pavement treatment used not only to resurface the pavement, but also to improve the pavement structure as well. This is done by including some wrap mix into the asphalt. Wrap is recycled asphalt. We use about a 25% mix, which helps in the stability, especially in the intersections. Bids on this project were received on Tuesday, March 20, and were as follows. A-PAC, Kansas, $890,847.70. Our engineer's estimate was $1,139,534.20. The 2,000 budget allocates $1 million from the special sales tax fund for the 2007 milling inlay project. It is the recommendation that the City Commission award the contract for the 2007 asphalt arterial major maintenance project, number 07-1621, to A-PAC, Kansas, Shears Division, in the amount of $890,847.70. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions of staff.
I know you probably can't answer this because you weren't here, but is this the same process done by the same company that did Front Street from Crawford going north to around the bicentennial center?
That's correct.
That's correct.
A-PAC, yes.
Okay, has anybody taken a drive down that street?
Yes, we've, if I could just comment on that, is that we're very much aware of the problems in a number of locations around the city. As a matter of fact, the city engineer and our internal staff has had a discussion on this, is that we have a gentleman from the Asphalt Institute that's going to be coming out this week. We've set up a meeting to be able to discuss our design mix and our inspection processes and the time of year in which we do these types of work, to see if we can come up with some answers of how to be able to correct this. But there's a number of locations that we have where we're not satisfied with the results. I believe that you've gotten with Ben to be able to go out and to let A-PAC know that we're going to need to be able to fix those locations, they're under warranty. Many of these things really haven't even lasted six months, and so we're aware of that. Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you.
Prior to, a couple of years ago, the slurry seal process was what was used predominantly on all of our asphalt streets in Salina. We weren't milling, portioning them up, and then putting it back down. I haven't been real happy with the process, to be honest. Iron Street was another one, or not Iron, but Ninth Street, just north of Iron, was another place that had to be redone twice, and it still isn't doing very well. I get concerned about the fact that you have a section of pavement that's designed to do, handle the traffic that you put on it. When we milling, when we cut out part of it and then put it back down, it's like putting a Band-Aid over the top of what's left. And I see that the subgrade failures are what's causing a lot of the problems. That's what happened at North Ninth. You could see that it, you know, the subgrade totally failed because you got moisture through it at that point in time. Is this really the best way to handle our asphalt street maintenance?
I would say that we have been investigating what type of mix that we use. There are some problems associated with that. It's with the curb and gutters that are on the streets that we're doing, it's designed to shed all the water off the street and into the curbs, which is supposed to be worse draining. With the mix that we're using, there is some infiltration into the asphalt itself, and then when it gets out to the curb, it's already lower, so it's kind of, and that's where a lot of the issues are coming. That's why we've done some research into changing what our mix is. We've contacted Jim Jones with Kansas Asphalt Painting Association. He's coming this week, trying to do what we can to get rid of the defects that we're getting out of our, when we inlay these projects. But there are several factors involved, whether it be, we looked at several different options, whether it could be, you know, weather, time of year this stuff's going down, that's one reason why we're trying to get at it earlier, because of the temperatures that ideally, when this stuff goes down. Location, traffic, the amount of recycled asphalt that goes back into the mix, all these factors are things that we have addressed, and we're hoping to get a much better idea with this meeting that we're having coming up.
Well, if we awarded the contract today and then you changed the mix, will there automatically then have to be a change order and possible additional cost because of the change of mix?
Possibly. There's some, actually, what I've gathered from this is we're actually using a better oil than what's in our city specs right now, and that's another thing that we're looking at with Jim Jones from CAPA, is upgrading our specs. Our asphalt specs right now are really kind of outdated. The oil that we spec is difficult to get into. It's actually more costly for them to get it than it's a, not as good an oil. So they actually use a PG-rated oil right now for the asphalt mixes.
As part of this contract, the repair of the subsurface, I agree with the mayor that part of the problem is the underbase, it needs to be in really good shape in order to just do a milling overlay over it.
I agree with you, but that is not part of it.
So that gets done prior to any milling and overlay, or who does the repairs?
Repair, maybe I missed something.
Of the under...
Of the subgrade?
Of the subgrade.
We're not getting down that far. We're milling off an inch and a half.
Okay, and then you have the old, oftentimes, concrete surface, and that's where some of the problems are coming from, I believe. Who, is there any repair work done prior to the milling or prior to the overlay?
To jump in and help you?
Yes, thank you.
If we've got a pothole situation...
A pothole, yeah.
In the street where you're milling, you do repair that before you begin the mill work?
Yes, yes.
Commissioners, the expectation of the contractor is, once they mill that, to look at any deficiencies in that road structure that you can tell, to fix those, to do whatever you can to make sure the base is adequate and fully stabilized if that's an issue, and it can be from spot to spot occasionally. Make sure that we address whatever it takes to hopefully eliminate any reflective cracking beyond what we would normally expect. As Carlton mentioned, there are a lot of aspects that go into milling overlay and asphalt work, from the application to the time of year and current weather conditions, to the mixture, the oil, and all of that, that we need to look at. I guess with that in mind, going back to the question of the existing road work and where we go with that, I think we need to, we're not quite far enough along to be able to give you great detail as to specifically what we believe the causes are and the locations we talked about and possibly other locations we're looking at. We're going to do that as soon as we have all the answers to those questions, and we're in the middle of that right now. I don't think that'll take a tremendous amount of more time to do that. That's real important to us. It's also important to make sure, and we do this, that our specs are to the level that we think they need to be, and that the workmanship is also assured to be to the level that we expect it to be, so that if we do put money into this project, that we don't expect to turn around and have issues with it in just a few months. And with that, I need to ask our city engineer a quick question, is when we talk about the spec issues, Carlton, is it the intent to have any change that we believe is necessary in the specs actually addressed prior to implementing this contract? And if so, does it, does it indicate that possibly we need to start again, or do we play off of a potential change order from those changes on this contract?
My thought right now is it would depend on what comes back from, when we speak with Jim Jones from CAPA, what his... Jim Jones from CAPA, what his recommendations, we're meeting with him, we're also meeting with the local contractors to get their input, and then depending on what those changes are. I do think there's a lot of things that, where the deficiencies have happened very recently, has been some factors outside of what the actual mix is. But, you know, if we can upgrade our oil, if we can upgrade our aggregates to something that's going to perform better.
Let me ask this. First of all, do we believe that we'll have those answers fairly quickly regarding at least our specifications?
I don't think it'll take very long for them to turn that around.
Okay. So then the next question is, is do we believe it's more cost-effective to wait, ensure the specifications are to exactly what we want them to be, rebid, to see what bid we get, versus to go in with these specifications in which we're sort of locking into an agreement here with the thought that if we want to change that, we're going to be subject to a change order, which may very well be a higher unit, may end up becoming a higher unit cost rather than if we started with the specs where we would like them to be? What's your thought on the cost comparison of those two options?
Again, there's a lot of variables. Like I said, the oil that we have spec'd is not being used. They're actually using a improved PG-rated oil. So that's already included in this cost that we get. I would assume that that sort of oil would be the same, that what comes back. One thing that I would guess will probably be different is the aggregates that are used from a, whether it be BM1, BM2, whatever it ends up being.
What kind of?
And I can't give you a price difference, no. I meant to look that up.
What kind of a bid guarantee period of time do you have on your bids? Are they guaranteed for 30 days? You received the bids on March 20th?
Yes.
Do you have a guarantee time, that they have to guarantee that price?
I can't answer that.
I would venture to say that you do.
I'm sure that we do.
I would venture to say it's typically normally 30 days. You have, they offer a bid, and it's guaranteed for a period of time. We had to check and see what our bid guarantee time is. That would give us the time to work through some of these other issues. Possibly as well, if you have to get unit price differences, you could get those before we enter into the contract and see where we're at, so we know whether or not it's something we would want to rebid.
Sure.
If it exceeded our budget or exceeded what the other numbers were. Obviously, with these two bidders, it would appear that we got a good number from APACs.
Yes.
But we need to, I think if we could postpone this until, at least until next week meeting, and then we can decide then if it needs to be postponed further. You can check out your bid guarantee period of time, and you can check out what may happen on the spec issue. We're even do, two weeks, it doesn't matter to me. What's your thought?
Yeah, I was going to refer that to Carlton. Carlton, if we postpone this either one or two weeks, does that give you adequate time to maybe answer some of those questions to sort of figure out whether the rebidding would actually be a better option, based on what could be revised specs?
I think so. I think two-week period.
Two weeks?
Yep.
Okay. Other questions?
The one other question I had was about the timing in this contract for the actual works, and Santa Fe and Mulberry and Santa Fe and Iron are going to have the curbs replaced as part of the traffic signal installation. Is there enough, do we have control over that? I mean, I'd hate to see us have the thing repaved right up to the old curbs and then tear them back out for three or four feet and then have a patch in there immediately.
We've already talked about coordination with that.
With that other contract?
Yes.
Okay.
So is there a motion to postpone this item for two weeks?
I would move that we postpone Item 8.6, the 2007 Asphalt Major Maintenance Project, for two weeks.
Second.
They're moved in second that we postpone Item 8.6 for two weeks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Is there any other business that needs to be brought before the Commission today?
No, Mayor.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Seconds.
Moved in second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we're adjourned.